All right, we're gonna get started. Regular council meeting of July 12th, 2021. Okay, roll call please first, Leslie.
Mayor Loughlin. Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Goodweiler.
Here.
Stulman.
Here.
Okay, got some new people in the audience for a change. We will start off with the consent agenda, which is to approve the minutes of the last meeting of June 28th, last council meeting. Approve a classy liquor license with Sunday sales for Mexico Lindo, UBA Mexico Lindo Grill in Cantina. Approve outdoor service for the Down Under at 102 West Main on August 6th and 7th for Hoover's Hometown Days in Records Destruction, destruction. And the claims, please, someone give me a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Colton and Jerry. I don't have any comments.
The Down Under, they just putting, they're putting a fence around that little green space.
Usually there's a map involved.
That's what I was gonna add.
But I don't see it.
Leslie has one.
Leslie's got a map.
Says the service area will be fenced and seating will be provided.
Yeah, the fencing area is the same as it was in previous years. It's the same sketch that he sends every time.
It's not the whole.
No.
It's about.
It's to the sidewalk, it's to the west edge of the sidewalk and then up to about the gazebo.
Well, that keeps his patrons inside the fence? So is there somebody at the entrance to the fence?
I don't think that they require someone to be at the fence, they just have to keep the people from walking out.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Oh, I don't know if they have it, they didn't indicate that.
We haven't had any issues in the past.
We haven't had any, yeah.
I was at a little concert Saturday night in downtown Iowa City on Market Street. People were just buying beer in the bar and walking out. And the street, the street was closed, it was kinda nice. Okay, any other comments on the consent agenda? Nearly none, well vote please.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Okay, up next is item six, which is communications open forum. If someone is here that would like to speak to the council, we'd love to hear what you have to say. You guys can come up, if you want to talk, when your turn comes, when you're on the Does anyone here to speak to the council, Zoom or live? Nearly none, we'll move on to the non-consent agenda. First up, Resolution 2019, accepting the resignation and approving an agreement with Redmond Jones II, city administrator, move to action, I need a motion.
So moved.
Colton?
Second.
Let's vote. Any discussion? Nearly none?
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yes.
Now's the time to talk about our timeline or anything like that? Briefly, Colton, myself, Leslie and Tom got together last week, Thursday, we're working on a job description for the city administrator, updating it. Once we get that worked on, hopefully we'll meet again this week. I'm not working. And then we will start posting it and advertise for a new city administrator.
Well, we have to have this okay by council.
Yes.
So it'll be two weeks.
We'll get that on the next agenda. And as soon as that's okay, we'll post it shortly after.
Maybe we start circulating this so everybody can look at it, so if there's any changes that want to be made, they can be made.
Yeah.
And we can.
So Leslie's work.
I don't really want there to be discussion.
I get it, yeah, we don't. No, this is detail stuff we don't need to talk about, who knows what. Okay, so the timeline now, we'll move forward from there to search for a new city administrator. And we'll see what we get. I think I'm gonna move on. Resolution 2020, adjusting salaries of certain appointed police officers, move to action, give me a motion, someone.
Someone.
In the chat, Nick seconds. Okay, I wonder if Cory would be the best person to come forward and explain?
So one of the things the department has to look at is retention of the people we have. And with that, some of our area surrounding agencies are offering pretty high amounts of money for certified officers, so I think we have an obligation to try to at least up the ante a little bit to kind of close that gap, so we don't potentially lose some of our staff. So I know I met with each of you individually, with the exception of Nick, he got a written response, so I apologize for that, but basically just here to answer any questions. When I sat down with the majority of you, there was only one option presented, and then I had a councilperson ask me for some additional options, which is why you get a C3.
I wanted to talk to two officers myself, but I thought I had the members, I don't. Sounds like one of them would stay. If with a little bump. At least one, that's all I know. Maybe we're just not competitive, like apparently we're not.
I think the problem is that law enforcement is not a sought-after field, and these municipalities that can pay the big bucks, as in Johnson County, can up the ante and price those little people out of the market.
Yeah, we can do this once, can't do it, can't do it a lot.
I mean, at the end of the day, you can't compete with Iowa City, you can't compete with Johnson County as far as pay scale goes. What we can compete with is that, you know, you ain't gonna get shot at probably, you're not gonna get spit on, people ain't gonna throw stuff at you.
Have you listened to their police reports, Loughlin?
Well, I'm.
I have been spit on. I have been spit on.
I'm sure you have.
I have.
But, you know, for the most part, this is Mayberry, you know, compared to where they're asking to go. I guess Johnson County, we got right around the Bone docks. I'm for doing what we can to retain what we have.
Okay, so what I'm looking for, I guess there's three options, version A, B, C.
And so basically, what that is, is in descending order, version A gives more of a bump to the two senior officers to be more equitable with the bump to the most junior officer. So basically, it's just showing the difference of what that costs. Yeah. Is what you're seeing. Just so you can make an educated, do you have an idea of what each difference, what each version's gonna cost?
Total cost of the city, version A is $18,000, total cost version B is, no, I'm sorry, version A is $20,800, version B is $18,000, version C is total cost of the city is $15,500. That takes everything into account.
Was merit taken into account on any of this?
No, it was just there for reference to show how that would fit into a pay scale. Basically, I threw that in there just so you could see that it wasn't blowing it out, you know, blowing the pay scale theory out of the market.
Okay.
How many years' experience does Officer Steen and Holmes have?
I think collectively, Officer Steen is at 20-plus with her time with Johnson County. And they've been with us since 2015, both of them, respectively.
Didn't we send Mr. Holmes through the academy?
No, Officer Holmes came to us as a certified officer.
From West Kating, correct?
Columbus Junction.
So one of the questions I have is at one point, we were in a partial, partial pay agreement with the school for Officer Steen, is that still in effect?
Yes.
Is it a percentage, or is it just a flat rate?
They flat rate 10 hours.
$10,000?
It's just 10 hours. They pay for 10 hours, as far as I understand.
So it's 10 hours, so as her pay scale goes up?
Yeah, essentially, we're gonna force it on the school. And I have not spoken with the school.
Sure.
Didn't want to kind of get my.
I get it.
Chicken before the egg kind of thing.
I guess as I'm looking at these different options, I guess my opinion would be, if we do anything, version A, which is obviously the best one for the officers, and version C, which is the least, is only $4,400 difference, I guess my opinion would be go beg or go home.
Suppose we'd be playing catch-up again if we went with the smallest version?
Well, and if $4,400 is the difference between losing one or keeping both, we'll wish we had done the other. I mean, if the second guy walks, then I suppose he walks, we're not out anything because he takes his salary with him.
And just for your reference, to refresh everybody's memory, train one officer at the academy is $8,000 to $10,000.
Ain't gotta tell me, and we pay him to do it.
$10,000? Yeah.
That's just the cost of the academy, right?
The tuition alone, I think, is $8,000, and you have to pay for the meals while they're there.
Paying them drive backs and forth.
That's one officer, so you have to do two, that closes that gap pretty good.
I've said this many times, we'll never be able to compete with those big cities, never. So I guess one question I'd have, do we have any idea what some of these other communities are paying for their officers? Do we have any?
The latest numbers I have, because I knew you'd ask. So right now, probably our closest representation that is reported this year would be Moringo, which is a 2,500 population city. They are currently, their wage range is $46,000 to $54,870 for officers. So about where we're at. If you compare, let's see, I broke down here.
West Liberty.
West Liberty didn't report, neither did Wilton. Are probably, you know, where we, where we look at is, we're about there. The thing you have to consider with Moringo is, Moringo is Moringo, they don't have a major metropolitan area, you know, within 10 minutes, so.
Or an interstate.
Or a major interstate that dissects their community.
Okay, so you go.
So refresh my mind again, how are we gonna pay for this? Is this gonna be a budget amendment, or even, I thought you said you could cover it this year within your current budget?
I can make concessions to help bridge that gap, yeah, I wouldn't be able to do the whole thing, but.
Even if, even if we went with version A over version C?
I can do the best that I can to trim my operation to make that happen. And the reason why we didn't do the budget amendment now is we don't know what that final cost would be, so if we lose somebody, there may not even be a need to do a budget amendment.
Right.
So.
So you would trim your costs how, maybe reduce some overtime, or?
No, there's, there's, there's areas in the operation budget that you can look at things that maybe we were adding as a one that can get bumped.
Yeah, you showed us that list.
Yeah. So there's areas that, you know, rubber meets the road, we can cut back.
Well, with the current officer issue throughout the nation, you know, I guess we could be looking at losing an officer and not be able to fill that officer.
That's possible.
For several, who knows how long, quite some time. So I guess as we're talking about this, I would like to see us start thinking of other, other options, and I'm sure other communities are gonna end up doing the same thing. Options of what we can do as a police force, you know, without that officer, whether it be maybe home cameras on doorbell rings.
Sheriff.
More surveillance.
The sheriff could handle some calls.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I talked to him about that a while back, if we can do some kind of agreement with them like someone does with Johnson County, and he said, not interested, done with the conversation.
Or put it that way, huh?
Yeah.
The reason that is, we're too busy, so you would have to hire six deputies to cover this town. And with comparison, you know, our next closest city in this county is Tipton. You know, I think, I don't remember what they're saying, that 30, 3,200 people, you know, and they have a, they have a six officer department with the sheriff's office that's in their town. So that's one thing to consider, and the other, you know, the other side is just keeping back your mind, those of you that don't work on this side of it, since we sit in the corner of a county, we don't get a lot of extra patrol time from our neighboring agencies. And we also have the benefit of sitting at the boundary of two state patrol districts, so we literally I'll give you a situation, I was involved in the situation, and my closest backup was 40 minutes away, because there was one deputy that was responding from Loudoun. So those are those, you want to keep those things in the back of your mind when you make, when you make those calls.
So that instance, you were the only one on duty?
I was the only one on duty.
Now.
And we have no mutual aid agreements with Iowa City or?
But every, every police officer in our force has its own car. Can't we set something up that, with a situation like that, you can make?
Yeah, we have a call, yeah, we have emergency call-in, but that's not guaranteeing they're gonna be in town or available. You know, they had an adult beverage, they ain't coming, so.
We have two officers that live in the city limits, one lives in Iowa City, and Cory's what, seven, eight miles out of town? So if the two in town are gone, you're looking at 20 minutes before you got backup from Iowa City, West Liberty, even though they have lights and silence.
Well, my worry is that if we should happen to lose one of these officers, that we're not gonna be able to fill that other officer.
Well, in my opinion, you're given a three-year off, if we decide to give raises, we would be given a three-year officer, a $3.27 raise, and you'd only be giving a six- and seven-year officer a dollar fifty, a dollar thirty? No, two. Were they a 26, 20?
Two and a quarter, two, 230.
Yeah.
Version A.
So to do it fairly, you would have to give them all the same raise. Otherwise, you're slapping two of them in the face and saying that they're three, four years extra is only worth.
Well, you're getting a $5,000 raise if we go with version A.
And that's where the stepping, the merit pay scale should come into play, once it's in place. I don't feel like reinventing the wheel, we're not gonna do that tonight. I mean, Cory's put out a pretty good presentation of what we, what needs to be done.
So me and Tom talked quite a bit, one of the things Tom told me was that city government has two responsibilities, public safety and infrastructure. So I think this is one of our main responsibilities right here. So version A is the best thing that they've given us as far as being able to retain a police officer. I think that's the way we need to go, it's the most fair.
You got the motion, you want to insert version A? Let's just.
I insert version A. I move and insert version A.
I'll second.
You seconded the first, okay, so.
I'll second. I don't know if it matters, but I'll second. It's gotta be official that way, I still say.
I think so.
And then.
So that's part of the original motion, that, version A.
That's what we were gonna kind of handle this.
To address your concern, Jody, once, once this pay scale thing has actually been ratified and, and figured out completely, then next year when we do pay, Kathy should fall into where she belongs. Now, on your behalf, Cory, the wishes and dreams for a fifth officer just got a lot less. At least in my, in my eye. I mean, there's, I think we stepped up.
Well, we talked about that happening when we were over 3,000 residents anyway. If you remember that conversation. Okay, we got a motion to insert version A with the resolution of two-hour bump for $2, some an hour bump for two and almost four, three, three-twenty something. For a total cost of the city of around $20,800. I think it's something we gotta do. Okay, any other discussion, then we can vote? Okay, let's go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yeah.
Sexton.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Resolution 2022, 21, approving adding the title Deputy Clerk to the Finance Officer Treasurers Job Title for the purpose of obtaining certification with the Iowa Municipal Finance Officers Association. It's pretty much a formality, but you've got to be a deputy clerk in your title to get this. I need a motion, please. Jody? Jerry seconds?
Somebody kind of blame this.
Leslie, Leslie, that's what she's doing.
So if you read the resolution, I kind of put it in there, so IMFOA is one of the large, longest living organizations for clerks and finance officers in the state of Iowa, and that's where we go to get our training every year, we go twice a year. As part of the training that they provide to us, it's basically making sure that we're doing a good job for the cities. And with that, we, by going to training and participating and going, putting in the time, we can get certified, but the city always pays us to go, but if she, if Heidi doesn't have a deputy clerk title in her, in her title, she can go to the trains, but she won't be able to be certified. So you're paying for training, but you're not paying certification, basically. So really, it's just basically allowing her to get a certificate saying that she's completed the courses, and she's done a good job for the city, I can do a good job for the city.
Leslie got certified, I don't know, over a year ago.
Yeah. You have to be in your position to be, to get a clerk certification, you have to have deputy clerk in your title and be in your position for three years, I have that, and to get the finance officer, you have to be in your position for five years, you don't have to have it in your title, but you have to be, you have to have the clerk certification or the finance officer certification, so it takes a total of five years to get both of them.
Did Gordon have it?
He did not.
Is there something that Heidi wants?
Yes, it is. She's very interested in obtaining the certifications, she had, I think this.
But you have them both, don't you?
I do, yes.
Colton, can you guys hear me?
Heidi, yes, go ahead.
Yes, I am very interested, this is something that I talked to Leslie about, I think it's very important to get the most training and education. So if, you know, and then, you know, it's just letters, but like I said, it's, it's good to have that behind my name. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, we'll vote to approve the job title description.
Councilperson Stulman.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Okay, Parkside Petroleum, Resolution 2022, approving the revised site plan for Parkside Petroleum LLC located at 401 Parkside Drive, I need a motion, please. Colton and Jerry, I think this is just for the sign, I'm just gonna update. Trying to figure out exactly what this is, but I was here at the zoning meeting too, so I kind of knew. Trying to figure out exactly what this is, but I was here at the zoning meeting too, so I kind of knew my one.
Major change to this would be the location of a sign on the southwest part of that parking area. And in order to accommodate the sign, it makes revisions to the storm sewer layout, and there's also some minor changes. That made it a little bit more efficient for the water and sewer services. They've redone those as well, so nothing too significant, but. The addition of the sign that does obviously change the appearance of that area, so they want to get that before us for approval.
You like it, Dave?
I don't see any issue with it. I think it's acceptable.
P and Z approved it. Six oh. Tom's gone. Any other questions? Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Dean?
Yeah.
Stulman?
Yes.
Okay, West Branch Village, resolution two twenty-three, approving the West Branch Village Expansion Site Plan Move to Action. Motion someone? You probably gonna. Jerry's motion.
I'll second.
Tom will second. Okay, so they, you guys came to us a month or more ago to P and Z meeting. We had some changes. You, you did what we asked you to do and. I think it's, they're doing what we wanted to do.
I'm not seeing a revised drawing.
The, the overall plan?
I'm not approving the drawing. It's in my computer, so.
That's not going to represent what he's looking. Looking at the board here.
Mr. Larry? Yeah, I'm, I'm not approving that one.
Give me one second here. So the, uh, the owners of West Branch Village are looking to expand. Adding additional sixty-five lots to the southwest corner, currently undeveloped site. We approached the Planning and Zoning Commission back in, I believe it was May, maybe early June, uh, with an initial proposal. They came back with some changes they requested. Those changes included, uh, some, some additional discussion on the sanitary sewer and wastewater items. Uh, they requested a second access point to the expansion, proposed expansion area. They wanted some guest parking to be added. We wanted an area for, uh, snowplows, snow removal, so that wasn't blocking. Parking areas or the road. An emergency shelter. Fire truck access by, by limiting parking on the street, so no parking on the street. A connection to Hoover Trail. Uh, and then landscaping added around the, throughout the site and, and around the site. Came back to planning and zoning last week, presented a revised plan that you're seeing in front of you currently. With that revised plan, uh, we, we addressed the, the issues requested by planning and zoning. On that revised plan, I showed a, a potential option for a second access to the community. That I understand is, is the wrong choice for location of that second access. I did provide. Uh, a revised access location to the city engineer earlier today, showing that access at the northeast corner of the site. Beyond that, that's the only change to the proposed layout, uh, than what you're seeing currently in your. Uh, in your plan set in front of you. There is some, uh, sanitary sewer changes that will be made, mostly to better address where the metering location will be so we can. The entire proposed area will not go through the lagoon system. It will tie directly into the city system, and then we'll set it up. Through this revised meter location so that the existing community can also be connected to the city system and, and move from the lagoon system. Landscaping, we're showing a number of trees surrounding the, the site, the proposed area, and then. Dispersed throughout the, the homes on the, in the expansion area. Added twenty-six parking spots, which is. Basically one, uh, one additional parking stall for every three homes. That meets, uh, some of the requirements of surrounding communities. Providing a trail access that runs from the southern proposed street to Hoover Trail. And proposing a, uh, storm shelter up in the northeast corner of the site. It'll be sized per Iowa code to. Serve not only the proposed sixty-five homes, but the existing thirty-three homes that are in, are adjacent to that expansion area. There is an existing storm shelter, uh, that serves the existing community. If you have any specific questions on any of that, I'm, I'm certainly here to, to, uh, to answer any of those questions.
So I have one specific question. The. Storm water retention basin that's currently there right now. I don't know if it's actually being used as that, but. I think it was actually designed to be a third cell for the lagoon, but that's what you guys intend on using it for. Is that going to be cleaned out?
Yeah, that's intended to be a dry basin, so not a wet, wet basin. It will, uh, be its size to allow. To detain a hundred-year storm, but only release at a five-year release rate. Um, but eventually it will release completely down to a dry bottom.
And you're going to take, take all the trees and stuff out of it?
Uh, it's just, it's located just south of the existing two.
It's kind of a high score right now.
It is.
Awesome. So the connector road would be. I guess you're going to carve it into the, you're going to carve it in there somehow.
Well, we're the east. Yep, sorry. Oh, um, yeah, I looked at the, another option today, um, up in the northeast corner, and basically, if you come in the. I'm going to call it the newer area of the existing community, um, there's a, there's a curve back to the west when you get. Towards the north end of that area. Um, what I'm proposing is that we tee in there, and then we run an extension out to Hoover that wraps around the existing homes. And so we're with the intention not to have to relocate or, or remove any of the existing homes or relocate residents.
She's saying that would go. You'd go east and then go north?
Correct.
Yep. The.
Where?
On the curve, you'd go east and then north.
He can't take that straight.
Leaving up a real good turn on.
Left of a layer. I don't have it here. In the car, his hand's kind of tight.
The hill's about like that.
I know. I have a couple exhibits in the car that better show it if you, I apologize if I bring them in. If you give me a minute, but maybe you have them in front of you right now. I'm not sure. I know what you're looking at.
We just have the original drawing that went from P and Z.
Pardon me, one minute.
Go ahead.
No, I know that hill's pretty.
It's pretty winky.
They're pretty hard.
I know it.
No, thanks.
Have a look what they're doing over on, uh.
So this.
Local interchange.
This connector road was, uh. Kind of requested by, um, Dave of the city. Connect these two together just for. Emergency vehicles or whatever, but. Better traffic flow.
I assume they don't want to go to the street.
Well, the one they have proposed. One they have proposed would take out two homes and run through my front yard, so.
Darn that street in your front yard.
I don't think you're going to get any sympathy.
Kill Bob. The tree my kid brought home was a little sapling.
Oh, here we go, Mike.
They're screaming now. I mean, it's the same story.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a problem.
Well, they're going to work it out. Hopefully they got it worked out.
Sounds like they got a plan.
So I lied. I actually don't, I left more copies with the contract.
Well, you say you can do it, I give more power to you.
So it, it actually, uh, it's not that steep. It comes up kind of to the east at about five to six percent, and it curves back around and drains back towards Hoover. There's a little cut into that hill, but it's not as significant as I originally thought, so. I think it's. Engineeringable. Okay, so once again, this sewer, this, this whole newer part will be sewered directly to our current. It'll be directly sewer, not lagoon. And it will be metered, so they will pay the current rate. Sewer rate, once it's, once it, that meter's in place.
Well, I, I disagree with that.
Go ahead.
I mean. Do they meter your sewer?
No, they meter my water. We meter my water. The whole park has one water meter.
I, I get that.
We can't, we, we can't meter the sewer. This is a valid method.
For, for this one, it would be, but once you hook the whole.
That's a different story.
Then, then why would you, why would you do it any different than you do it anywhere else?
Because you have a lagoon that leaks.
There's so much I and I in.
It won't go through the lagoon.
Well, we may continue to meter it because there's so much I and I in infiltration. That adversely affects. Our sewer lagoons, so it would continue to be metered until that I and I gets repaired. Or whichever cost. Dollar, however a dollar's out for you guys. We would, we would probably continue to meter it. That's my understanding. With this new expansion area, it'll be all brand-new pipe. I don't expect you to see any difference between water and.
This part's fine.
Right. It's, it's the connection to the existing community where you see.
Could be infiltration, who knows what that would be. Okay.
Let me ask you, the, the. Street that's already in there, the, on this. The space, then that goes to your existing lagoon and soon?
Yeah. So. So I'm.
Lincoln and Washington do.
Yeah, Lincoln, Lincoln Street.
That's all PVC. That's, that's good stuff.
Yeah, I'm just wondering. Would it be advantageous to hook that up with this and run it all through the new sewer?
That's, we are putting in brand-new pipe throughout the entire expansion area. The, the homes that are currently on-site do all drain through the lagoon. It's just the proposed sixty-five lots that would go direct bypass lagoons, basically.
Right. I just wondered if, if we should require the rest of those in that, in that area there to be hooked up to that new, the new pipe. Assuming everything now is running to the north.
It's all PVC.
Yeah.
Except until you get to here.
The connection shouldn't be. There's that command hole or something. Then it goes down there to my yard.
I don't know. I feel like forcing them to do that now. It'd be to their advantage to do it at some point. I would think.
David, isn't there, um, some. State thing that if you. Build within. So many feet of an existing sewer and water, you have to.
There is a big intersection that talks about that. What that is referring to is if you're within two hundred feet, there's sewer available at the city, I think you're requiring it to hook up. That's something that we've talked about a little bit in our discussions. So I'll back up a little bit before we get too far into that conversation, and Colton, to your question, I think there's a master meter for the water out there, and that's going to serve this new development too. So we don't have a way to split this off from the water meter. So if we do this flume and we put an ultrasonic in there and measure the flow, we have a way to build for this new portion. The other half of that, or the majority of the village, will still go through their existing wastewater treatment facility. So we don't want to charge all of the water that goes through that meter without having a way to separate it. This would allow us to net that out. And then in the future, uh, because we know that that older system has some issues, that would also allow us to regulate flow. We can allow a certain flow rate through there and bill for what comes through. If we don't take it all through, if we can store some and, uh, regulate that so we don't have to oversize the sewer downstream, and we can accept that without creating problems, then that old part could hook on, but we have to have a way to regulate that. We also have to have a way, since that sewer system does have a lot of I and I, as Roger mentioned, that the rest of the city isn't paying for, accepting that in a condition where it has known issues. So those are the things that we're trying to account for with the, uh, measuring the flume, the flume flow and charging the sewer separately, so that it gets dealt with appropriately. As far as the connection, um, that manhole's been there for quite some time, and it's within that distance. It's right up next to that lagoon. And the city hasn't exercised that requirement in the past. They've been allowed to continue to operate that old lagoon as it is. Now, certainly, if the city decided they wanted to enforce that, that's the way that the ordinances are written, and that's the way the state always put together. But to date, that hasn't been the, the decisions to require them to hook up.
I don't think we want them to.
Well, not only that, that really has nothing to do with this. They're hooking their, what they're building, the new stuff, they're hooking that up to the city. So they're actually doing exactly what we want them to do.
And we do this in a manner that if we decided that that other part would come on, let's say the D and R looks at their NPS permit and says that they have to do some pretty significant upgrades, and it's. Cost-effective for them to come to the city and say they want to hook that on. We'll set this up so that that can be done, and if we need to put some flow in that incubator, or into the existing cell, so we don't overload the downstream, we would have it. So the hydraulics work at above a certain flow that would just go in there and then come back out and we can receive it.
So the city's never followed that, even though it's a. State ordinance or whatever it's called.
Right. The city can, can enforce that, or they can choose to, to allow them to, to operate as they are, as long as they aren't creating an issue.
As of right now, today, at least when, when Muckler first took over. The city wasn't capable of handling. Them with what, what we had.
I know.
But with the new system, it's been designed that it should be able to. Take them on.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
But in reality, we should have been able to handle Lincoln and Washington, shouldn't we? I mean, in reality.
Probably.
I, I get that we can handle the whole court.
In the previous government.
Okay, um, so we got a motion to approve. I, I think it's time.
The one thing I'm going to say is that. The. This community ever since I've been on council has done nothing but, but say, well, you know, we need more affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing. This is how town's going to grow, is affordable housing. You know. This Haven Park is affordable as the Hames is worth now, but this is better than a three hundred thousand dollar home. You know, we're not going to, we're not going to build hundred thousand dollar homes. You know, and, and there, they're going to move in a bunch of homes that you can buy for sixty thousand, seventy thousand dollars.
A little bit like.
Still cheaper, I promise. I, I'm not happy about what happened to Lot Raney, but it's still cheaper, I promise. So, you know, if you want affordable housing, here it is. And they're not like the other developments. You don't hear them coming in here wanting Tiff, wanting us to give them something, build something for them. You know, they're saying. Here it is. We're, we're going to, we're going to do this development, and in two years, you're going to have sixty new homes sitting here. It's no brainer.
Sixty-five lots is a lot.
It's a lot. It's a lot.
I mean.
You want, want their number so you can call them and thank them?
So how big, how big of?
It's a big area. It's a big area.
Yard are you going to have?
Oh, that's the one thing about this, glad you brought that up. Because in the plan, it, it shows the size for the homes is most everything that was going to go in there was a sixteen by eighty or sixteen by seventy-six. Now, one of the things I know Haven Park likes to do is cram double wides into everything they can, they can cram a double wide into. And the lot sizes that they have in this new development, if you put two double wides side by side and they have eight foot decks and the air conditioner's off the back, you can't even run a thirty-six inch lawnmower through there without hitting something. That's something we might want to look at.
I was going to say.
Is saying that these new developments are single wide only, you know, or come up with a minimum size. You following me with what I'm saying?
The, their size right now, forty foot by a hundred foot allows for the sixteen foot wide home plus the twenty foot parking pad and then some side yard.
Yeah.
Both of that. I don't want to.
How wide's the double wide?
They can be, they can get up to thirty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-eight's normal. So you, you have twenty-eight and then an eight foot deck. Now you're thirty-six and the, the back people have a four foot deck off the back of their thing and an air conditioner and stuff. You know, that's.
That's affordable housing too, that's what. A little cramped.
And that has nothing to do with cramped.
We're not wobbly trailer.
Public safety.
Thank God, you're right.
But that's something we can do in ordinance fees.
That was brought up two or three years ago.
But can we make an ordinance on private? I mean, how does that work with?
We can do a, a distance. There has to be X amount of distance between homes.
We can.
Currently it's sixteen feet between homes right now. Out there, if you're doing, like you're talking.
Well, if they're single wides, there's.
Well, I know that.
I mean, well, there would be a sixteen foot home on a forty foot lot, so that's, that gives you twenty, twenty-four feet.
Big yard.
Yeah. Now, the deck counts.
That's, that's all the reason I was asking is, are we looking at the same distance you see? Cause I, I, I mean, I live on the older side of town, so I personally say the newer side of town is cramped. I go to people's houses and I can stand in the living room and see the neighbor's living room from like sixteen.
Well, in my home, that's, that's just normal.
Yeah, but that's what I'm asking. I mean, if we already are allowing homes to be built over there that are, I would say close, I mean, maybe any closer here.
If you put a, if you put a thirty-two, thirty-two wide home on a forty lot, that's too damn dumb close. I agree with that.
Yeah.
Well, what are you, twenty-eights?
I don't know how you get around corner through town.
Come from the door.
They're shorter homes.
I'm just, I, I just wanted to break, I get what you're saying, but I'm just saying, I don't think we can, if we do do something, it can't be any worse or more stringent than what we're allowing.
That's, that's for a later day. This, this is.
Yeah, I agree. That's a later day. All right.
Not a whole lot later, because they'll have it filled up for you, Mike.
Let's move on. So we got a motion to approve. I did, didn't I?
Yep. I, the only question, the only thing I want to make clear is that we're approving this and not what's on the computer.
Everybody agree with that?
Second, I, I'd say I do have one question in regards to this.
Go ahead.
Maybe it's a corey question. Are we worried about weird sort of intersection that we're creating?
I don't know. I've seen the, what I'm going to have to answer.
I was going to speak to that.
Okay. Because it's so close to the.
Yeah. It just reminds me a lot of like.
It's eighty feet.
Bowery in Iowa City, which is a nightmare.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we've all probably driven on that.
I don't think this is going to be.
It's supposed to be just a fire.
Not heavily traveled.
This isn't supposed to be a normal road.
And it is private, right?
Yes.
All I, all I heard today. I was just curious, just wanted to.
Go ahead, Dave.
So generally, if you're looking at this layout and this were a city street, D O T has what's called an offset T intersection where you have to have a certain distance staggered, otherwise you line them up so that there isn't any sort of a confusion when you pull up to the intersection. So we might have a little bit of work. This was sent today. I, I looked at it on my phone as I was driving back. I was out of the office all day, but I did take a look at it and for the most part agree that if we can get this to fit up here and avoid having to relocate those existing homes, that's a benefit. It does look from the grading that we can get that to work. It's not too steep. We are close to Four Street at eighty feet, so that doesn't offer a lot of stacking. And the, the concern there generally is if you have much traffic, if you've got someone coming in wanting to turn into this roadway and you've got a couple of cars blocking that, it kind of locks up the intersection. I don't know what the traffic pattern is out there. Is it, is it a lot of traffic in the other side?
I've never seen two cars sitting at that intersection.
So if, if they're having, well, at this intersection, but let's look at the other side. We have two or three vehicles sitting there waiting to pull out on, uh, the street to the north very often, or is it that, that's going to be similar to this one, this is fully developed?
That's, that, that was more my question. I was once you have the sixty-five homes, so we can see that become an issue.
If you're not seeing much in the way of stacking in the intersections out there now on the fully developed section, then there's probably not much of concern.
No.
So, um, but it is definitely worth discussion.
That's one you have to go on.
I'm not that concerned about it myself.
I wouldn't either.
Think you put a little wiggle in it, that might help a little bit.
I just wanted to make sure I asked.
All right. Any further discussion? I'm hearing none. We're going to vote. Leslie, go ahead.
Councilperson Sexton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. You're good to start instruction.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Okay, let's talk about art. So if, uh, this mural's been a, I think it's been sitting in our garage for a year. And, uh, we need to get it out.
What size is this thing?
Pardon?
What's the size of this thing?
Eight by sixteen.
K tall sixteen line?
Yep.
Or sixteen by eight?
Two sheets of plywood. Four sheets of plywood. Um, if, if the ho, if the Casey's site, we want to sell that privately, then it kind of, we may not want to put a mural there. It's been suggested we put it right out here.
Has been suggested that we not?
Yeah.
I guess I, I have.
Is this a discussion?
Yeah.
It's a motion, actually.
A motion than proven.
Okay. Um.
You have a motion?
Motion. Well, we can talk about it first. Want a motion?
Don't we typically motion and then talk about it?
It's not a resolution. Go ahead. Now give me a motion.
Never mind that.
Let's talk about it first and we'll. I think it's losing traction already. Okay, so the suggestion was out here. It would be visible.
Need to those.
More or less. Okay. Um, Jesus, are we starting over on this thing already then?
Okay, so when I saw this on the agenda, I drove around, well, I drove up and down Main Street. And who owns Werman's Building? Werman's?
Randy Werman, yeah.
So we approached Randy because there's a spot perfectly that it would fit in.
Facing south?
Yep, yeah, facing south, right on the main street. My other thought was around the corner. Where the gazebo is, if you look east, there's a spot right there along the sidewalk. What, what's there? A coffee shop. What's that?
Bamboreum.
Bamboreum.
The old Bamboreum. Okay. Okay.
And then I don't know if Hoover Building's a historic thing, but there's a really nice spot on the east side by the down under side.
On the wall of the Hoover House.
Yes, of the Hoover House.
I like the Randy Werman building best. I'd like the Randy Werman.
I mean.
So. Yes, please.
Uh, across from the new cafe.
Across from the old bank to the east, that's the Werman Building.
That's the two-story building.
Springdale Insurance.
Springdale Insurance.
There you go.
There you go.
Don't tell us what happened, what was there forty years ago.
I still don't know.
Orchard. Yeah, I know.
I didn't know about that.
Okay, those are good suggestions. Are, are we killing this idea already then? That's, that's dead.
Yeah. Yeah, three other suggestions.
Crap.
So Werman's, which is the Springdale Agency, what were your other two? What coffee shop you like?
Hoover House, east side of Hoover House.
East side of the Hoover House.
Side of the Wayne Moss Building, it is.
On the old Bamboreum.
That one you could actually put.
It says Heritage Square over there. I put that sign up there.
There is two park benches. There's two park.
Get back.
Right there now. But.
So that's Wayne Moss.
We wouldn't even have to mount that one on the wall, I think, you know.
No, they both, they all need to, it needs to be mounted on the wall. Versus a freestanding? Adjacent to the sidewalk, it needs to be.
Cause the original plan was they were going to paint it on a wall.
I know.
And then.
And I wish we would have done that.
We couldn't decide where.
We couldn't, well.
We have trouble making decisions.
It was going to be at the main street building, but the building was getting in the process of being sold.
You never really asked, but.
They're actually putting on the side of the Jack and Jill building.
Well, the other spot, there is a fourth spot on the, you know where ours, uh, welcome to West Branch sign is up there?
The ideal.
Above the Jack and Jill parking lot? If you actually go down, there's a spot on that building also.
Schultz is on that. Jesse and Flinman.
Yeah, that was, that was originally the place and then they changed their mind. Yeah, they were, they originally had said it was okay and then they were going to remodel it and they.
Okay, here's what I can do. I got Randy Werman's number. I can call him. I got all those people's numbers. I can call them. If I get a yes out of one of them.
First yes.
We might have a winner.
So, let's clarify the Werman Building. Where are you looking at? On, on the south side of the building?
We should have the best skills.
There's a spot between, you know, the stairs, the stairs that go up to the apartment there. There's a window.
I don't know. There might be too many windows there.
To the west? No, I think there's a spot that'll, I didn't actually measure major. But there's a window and then there's an open spot and then there's another window. It'd be.
Forever etched in my memory.
I'll measure it and make a phone call. Is that, that's all we're going to do on that tonight. We don't need to, unless we want to free, put a freestanding high school parking lot, that's bad. I mean, the high school grounds, that's a bad idea.
No.
I was going to, I was going to recommend it. Recommend it? Go ahead.
Well, I mean, you can see if people who own BP are any favorable to putting that the corner up there instead of our lovely plywood.
Plywood?
Got back fence.
Yeah, I mean, something that'll be.
Medical office.
Yeah, or something up front, something, cause I know I think he wants to add on to that building, so he might want to put big, might cover any businesses there, but I don't know if they'd be amiable to something in the upper corner. So at least if you get off the interstate. I mean, I know people come from Herbert Hoover Highway and stuff, but I would say, I could be wrong. I would assume the majority of traffic that comes into West Branch is probably coming from there. So, put it right, if they're amiable to it.
Well, there's, there's a fence there. There's, is there a fence or is it just trees? There's no fence there. Okay, that's.
What about the food pantry? Outside of the food pantry building.
Maybe not in there. I thought about that too. Be eight feet, it'll be on the ground.
Sixteen feet wide.
Yeah, I was thinking.
It's pretty wide.
It's sixteen wide, isn't it?
Not only that, there's not enough of it exposed out towards the road, so you'd almost have to get out of your car and walk through the little breeze.
I see, by the time, if you put it near the corner, it would, it would clear.
I was just thinking the BP, also, you, people get to see it. It's also kind of like a welcome sign. It's not a two by three piece of plywood that says, welcome to the sort of west branches like this big.
Right, I guess.
Well, my theory always has been, we got to figure out a way, once they get off the interstate, to out and turn this way instead of.
Maybe a big giant eight by sixteen year old might be, it might, I think it might come down to the stop sign if we turn back around, but I mean, at least they'll come that way.
Maybe if we put an electric charging station in down that would probably do.
I'll, I'll make some calls.
Where we're going in the next thirty years, you'll have to drive an electric car.
You think so? You're in California, they got rolling blackouts and people can't charge their cars and go anywhere.
What do you do when you're in a traffic jam for four hours?
Gas gets up to four dollars a gallon.
All right, we're going to move on. Herbert Hoover Highway, Cedar Johnson Road. Apparently they want us to spearhead the project. You're asking us to spearhead.
It's on their side. Most of it's all on their side.
He may have.
I totally agree with this. If it cuts it in half.
Off?
Yeah.
Well, it would keep, it wouldn't be an I dot project. It would be a West Branch project. Wouldn't be a D O T project. Go ahead, Dave. You got some correspondence from the Johnson County engineer.
So as everyone's aware, we had looked at the roundabout, the cost share came back and there was also the issue that we could not, um, fund it over three years and reimburse the county. As we had initially discussed, so that was not affordable to the city to be able to take on the full three hundred thousand plus. As it, as the cost continued to increase over one year. So we had some discussion with the county, uh, looked at the current warrants, um, that were updated since the two thousand and fourteen study. And a left turn lane is required as you're headed eastbound on this, so that does shift a little bit more responsibility onto the county. Also looking at it, um, and recognizing that we would be looking at this configuration with left turn lanes. They, uh, approached us and said, since the city seems to have the most, um, concern or interest in how this intersection lays out and they're not going to include it in their current project, they felt that it would be kind of going back to the beginning and starting with this concept that we had prepared back in two thousand and fourteen. So, uh, the county asked if we would be interested in, I'm having the city be the lead on this, do the design and the county would compensate for their portion. This does not include any D O T funds or any swap funds. They use those on the other phases of Herbert Hoover Highway. So this would all be local funds, which makes it a lot cleaner, uh, for the city. We don't have to do the D O T. Uh, this does not include any DOT funds or any swap funds, they use those on the other phases of Herbert Hoover Highway, so this would all be local funds, which makes it a lot cleaner, uh, for the city. We don't have to do the DOT bid lighting, the audit, stick with DOT schedule. We can move a little bit quicker and have this ready to go, uh, this winter for bids, and then begin construction next spring. Uh, also with the property acquisition that we would need, you know, intersection work on the north side, northeast corner in particular, um, and having the city's, uh, previous discussions with the KLM folks. Um, they felt that that made things go a little smoother as well, so, uh, they asked me to present this to the council to see if there's interest in having the city be the lead on the project. And then we just work, uh, with the county to get this designed. Um, if there is, I can put together an agreement and get that, uh, before you at the next meeting, and also, uh, share that with the county. If, uh, you don't have any interest in doing that, I won't spend the time.
So are, are you looking at design and everything we've seen here in black?
Yes.
Who would do property acquisition? You, us?
Yeah, that would be part of the design requirement.
Have they done any legwork in that regard?
I, I believe they've spoken with the property owners on the north and south sides. Uh. I don't know how far they got with the acquisition, if they, I, I know they've done appraisals, but I don't know if they went past that part of the negotiations.
Would they pay the property acquisition costs?
On the west side, yes.
Oh, yeah.
They haven't talked to Kevin. They stopped right there.
So, just some overall win for us, or gonna go smoother?
Rather than them putting together a concept and us reviewing it and saying you haven't met these criteria on this side. This doesn't really satisfy what we need for the future. It takes our interest in.
Front and center.
So are you looking at a turn lane coming from the north too? Turn east?
Looking at how the street layout is, I see that as a major street in the future, would make sense to do it now rather than try to put that in later.
All right, I think you're done. Give us that agreement.
Time out.
More design work.
Acquisition, you'd have to, you're looking at the meadows, probably that whole corner, both, uh, on the west side and the south side of their property. We'd have to acquire some of their property. Yeah, we would, because the street curves around here.
South side and west side of Lot One.
So.
That's pretty much all we'd have to acquire. We would, would we have to acquire anything from the school?
I don't believe so. If you look at the edge of the pavement that's shown there, it matches pretty close to the roadway, and I think we can work that into ditch. Now, if we try to get the trail graded in, that's something that's a future project. We just need to make sure that that gets put in as part of the master plan for that area, and we'll do the street lining later.
Why, why aren't we, are we required to have the left turn lane onto the gravel road for the little lake diamonds?
No, so the way that this works is whether you do a left turn lane to go northbound as you head it east. That sets the traffic at a certain distance, and you want to go straight through the intersection, then we can be, you don't want to try to have them merging in the intersection. So we have.
Because I would rather put a right turn lane going west.
Right turn lanes, you don't need right turn lanes. To go north?
South.
North.
North. I'm talking.
Oh, I see, okay.
No, that, that left turn lane has to be there by default, because there's a, there's a left turn lane on the other side, the west side.
You got a line, you got a line, the turning lane's up.
They have to, it has to be there.
Look straight through.
The right turn lane is.
That's dumb though. That's one of those things that people are gonna look and, and say, what are those idiots doing up there in City Hall, putting a turn lane into a gravel road? That's, that's.
We can paint it all yellow too, Golden, and just hatch it, so that the through of traffic is going straight here and merging. And if somebody wants to go in there and use that, if they want a left turn lane, you can do that.
I don't know. I just agree with you, Golden. I, there's a lot of traffic that goes back into that area.
In the summer.
In the summer.
Yeah.
Six weeks out of the year.
It's one week out of the year.
Well, if the left turn lane works a collision, that's worth it, I suppose.
What's this, what's this cost? What does this cost the city?
That's something we have to work out with the county, as far as the cost share. I haven't got that far yet. We just threw together using their numbers and the quantities, what the total cost would be, and the items in yellow were not in their estimate, so.
What's that?
The items that were part of the yellow, those weren't in their estimate, and we've got some contingency in here, just to give you an idea of the upper end of what that cost should be. And this is pretty consistent with what they.
We doing all of Cedar Johnson Road?
No.
No, we're doing back, uh, the intersection in back.
Two hundred feet.
This is very preliminary, we haven't had much discussion with the county, we haven't done it before, we used some of your force numbers from their previous, so this, this, just to give you a rough idea, this, this is.
This is, this is total cost.
Yeah.
It's not a breakdown of what our cost.
So if the county's responsible for seventy percent, for example, knowing we're at a million dollar project, they're seven hundred thousand, we're three hundred thousand, if they're slightly higher than that, that, that's what we need to work out with them, is how do we?
Was sixty, forty-ish before?
Yeah, that was before the, uh, left turn warrant that we identified, which makes them responsible for the turn lane and the transition act. So that's, that was in the email that Neil had sent to me. So again, just very preliminary concept, so we have some bases for discussion, and then the next step would be, if you were wanting us to proceed with putting this together, we'd have to sit down with the county, look at these estimates. And, uh, figure out how that cost share would work, put that into an agreement. And, uh, we would put together a cost for us to do the engineering.
So that would be the first, I mean, I guess that would be the question, because in order for us to move forward, we would need to know almost really what it's gonna cost us, and how much they're gonna be willing to, to share, blah, 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 blah. What you're asking for is for us to do an agreement with you to get us to that point. So that's the number we need to know.
So at this point, I'm just looking for direction. Do you want us to proceed with talking with the county on this approach? And then I would bring it back to you with, the county's interested, here's roughly what the cost share would be, here's what it would take for us based off the information they already have, to continue designing, get it ready for bidding.
Why doesn't the county want to do this?
They don't have the staff in-house, and they feel that with the city having all of these stipulations or conditions that we're trying to incorporate, it doesn't make sense for them to have their consultant go back, scrap the roundabout idea and figure out this. It makes more sense for the city just to, um, do this as part of their cost contribution, and, uh.
I really don't see what the city's stipulations are on this. If, if a traffic study says you have to have a turn lane, you have to have a turn lane. And, and I recollect them scrapping the roundabout by they're near doubling the, the, the price on this.
Technically, technically, they would only have to come to this intersection, the rest is ours, so technically, they only have to come to this intersection, and that's it.
Right.
I mean, we're asking, we're asking for the intersection.
That, that was the previous discussion they had, but when we said, you have to go back, that two thousand fourteen warrant has changed, it now triggers a requirement for a turn lane.
Okay.
The whole set of circumstances.
So now they have to.
Do the outs.
Okay.
But we don't have, we don't, we do Cedar Johnson Road, right?
If, if we're going to be changing the alignment and elevation of this intersection, and we're going to do work on that north side, it doesn't make sense for us to pay for the east half and not get a.
Do we, do we have any idea how much this would be saving the county, or is there any savings to the county by having you do this?
I haven't looked at the cost share on this yet, but I would suspect that, um, the engineering is going to be the same whether Anderson Bower does it or we do it. It's just the reviews and the iterations.
Well, I'm just, what I'm getting at is, can we now negotiate with the county on them helping us finance this thing by us designing this part of the project?
It didn't sound like that was something that was going to, uh, be possible in the discussion with the representatives that was here from the county. They didn't have any interest in buying up their money.
So if this is our project, we're, we're writing the checks initially. Correct? For one point three million dollars.
That's, that's something that we would have to talk with the county about. I think we would have that, that setup that they would pay their portion as project, uh, with me.
That's how it was before, only the other way around, I'm pretty sure.
Same bridge situation.
Right.
It's allowed.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see. They wanted us to pay as we went before, when it was turned around, so.
With all the stuff we got going on, trying to float this and some of our other projects, I don't see that being a number.
I think at the end of the day, if we do this, we're gonna have to borrow the money, so, I mean. At least our portion.
Yep, a lot of it. Would, would the division be down the center of Cedar Johnson?
Yeah.
It would be. They would pay for the west half of Cedar Johnson.
That was, that was the way they had it split previously.
Yeah.
So if the condition stays the same, and they're responsible for the transition on the turn lane on the east side, that, that could shift a lot of that cost. That's something that.
You could have a Cedar Johnson.
Yeah.
That's a no-brainer.
So if, if that's the conditions that the county agrees to, then we would be able to figure out the cost.
They agree to that. I, I like it a lot better.
You told me to do this.
Are we looking at doing, starting this next spring?
Yeah, it's gonna be done by.
Well, it's easy.
That's in.
Borrow the money. I mean, we have the capacity.
Not to drag it on, but assuming since we do it.
We can figure out how we're gonna pick that.
Section we're going in at Johnson Cedar's going to.
One point three million, they would reimburse us.
Continue and attach rights to you.
Virtually.
And then we have it so. This section here.
No, whatever they think it's gonna cost.
They can set it up to where.
Comes in on, we also get.
Transition, we can just do the rest of the road work. We have them do it, they might not do that.
Okay, so Dave, I think you should continue. Talk to Johnson County.
I'll try to get some information on how that.
Get us a proposal.
How that cost would be covered if they're able to cover their portion of the construction cost throughout construction, the city doesn't have to borrow for the full amount. I think that's one of the big issues that, that we're facing. We really don't want to go out and take out a one point three million dollar loan. Cover this project. I'll, I'll try to get some of that information and, uh, keep the cost share worked out a little bit more.
I think you need to move the ball around.
Okay.
Pardon? I'll move the mailbox for two hundred bucks. Nice subcontract out.
You'll move the mailbox?
Item eight. I'll take the two hundred bucks and move the mailbox. I wanted you to do that one.
So it sounds like, uh.
Yeah, for eight for two hundred bucks.
Johnson County financing, this is off the, off the table. So then.
A twenty eighty of three-year payback.
Okay, so that deal that, uh, Dick Millers, if that's ever had extended to the city.
Oh, yeah.
That would go away too.
Yeah. Okay. Um, thank you, Dave. Up next will be Watsi Creek Widening Project. I'll let those guys finish. So the Watsi Creek Widening Project, um, has talks have stalled.
I thought we made up our mind that we're gonna condemn it.
We are officially telling you talks have stalled.
Oh, okay.
So.
I thought that. See, that kept was getting, Kevin was getting everything ready.
Should be working on it.
Yeah.
I thought he was, I thought that was already done.
So I want paperwork filed within the next thirty days.
I thought we already, should we not already file paperwork? I thought Kevin was directed to go ahead and go that.
We did what we had to do.
But we said April first, he was gonna back it up from there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He was getting it already.
I'd love to see if we did the public hearing.
Well, we did.
I thought we did too.
Yeah.
But that would have been the first step. We have contacted an appraiser, which is the next step, to get the property appraised, we'll need a review appraisal, and we provide the information to their attorney.
So it's, I think it's consensus, and that we, we move forward with the.
Yeah.
Now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they messed this around for two years now.
And, and we don't even want to talk anymore.
It's four years.
All right. Okay. That's, uh, city staff reports. Anything from Matt or Melissa? You showed up, you might as well say something.
The, uh, College Street Water Main Project, they have the main laid and everybody's hooked up. Um, they started laying storm sewer today, or they're digging out intakes and putting the intake in on the corner. And All American is pouring the west side, they poured the radius and part of the west side of the road today. They'll be pouring the center of the street tomorrow, and then they'll do the west, or the east half after the intakes are replaced. Um, other than that, that project's been pretty smooth, considering we've been getting rain, state's dry for a month and a half, and then all of a sudden we get poured down, and then we start digging, so.
Um, Greenview Connection, that transformer's still there.
Transformer's still there, I think. David talked to them, and they were planning on being there two Mondays ago, and it hasn't been moved yet, so.
Once that's moved. There, two Mondays ago.
And start raining.
They set the newer transformer.
Yeah.
And then they haven't seen him since.
So, and once they're, once that transformer's moved, lunches should be done on East College. They're planning on moving out there and putting that chunk of maintenance. Last I knew, that was, that was their plan, so.
All right.
Are they gonna do the grading? Then they're doing.
Yeah. Getting tired of mowing around those flags.
They're only good for seven days.
What?
They're only good for seven days.
Uh, two weeks, I think.
Been my running two.
I'm just being a nice.
They're gonna relocate.
The electric ones need to stay there.
Next comes in there, he's gonna relocate them anyway. Um, the signage out there on Cedar Johnson and Greenview looks good. Now, if everybody obeys by.
Is there a stop sign then?
The stop sign on Greenview to Serenity is. But now there's actual signees here that say.
Yeah, saw it yesterday.
That, um, incoming traffic does not stop.
There's a new seal code out there, meet your approval.
Oh, it's awesome. It's really good. Need some hot weather to soak it in.
Yeah.
A week or two of that would be, yes.
You can kind of pick up the extra gravel that's in front of my driveway anytime you want, though. That's been left there from three years ago, that keeps coming down my driveway.
Can't help you there.
When you, when you, when you need to cover up some of those oil spots again, you know where to get some.
Those tree guys. Those tree guys. Ran their skid loader, spun their skid loader in the street. It'll be fine. All right, uh, Melissa, is she on?
I'm here, yeah.
Anything to report?
Uh, the irrigation lines were moved at Cubby last week, so then we're, we're just waiting on the rest of the project, but that stage is done. That's all I have.
Um, uh. Mayor and council, anyone?
Uh, oh. This way. Melissa?
Yes, yes.
How many diamonds are we doing?
Three diamonds.
Thank you.
Um. I got nothing else.
Melissa, do it.
I have one thing.
I got something.
We're gonna resume the regular meeting schedule in August, so that means we'll have two meetings, um, back to back, and then next year we'll coordinate a little bit better. Um, and historically in the past, we used to, um, skip the first meeting in July and just have a third meeting because we pushed that June meeting back, um, but it really throws off the schedule. So, um, talked to Roger about getting, getting us back on schedule until, wait until September, so then that would put our meeting at August, July, sorry, July twenty
Twenty eighth.
Sixth, July twenty sixth, which would be two weeks from today, and then August second, and then August sixteenth, and then September, of course, it has one day off because of the holiday, but then we'll be back on schedule for the remainder of the year.
So the twenty sixth and the second of August. I won't be here the next meeting, twenty sixth.
I think both meetings would rather be probably short meetings, there's not gonna be a whole lot on them, um, other than the job description we'll need to approve, but either the twenty sixth or the second meeting.
So we're going the twenty sixth, the second and the sixth thing.
Tom and Colton, can you meet in here Wednesday?
No, it's Wednesday night.
Wednesday? Talk about this job description.
No.
And so can you email this to everyone? Got anything to say on it? Call me or Leslie. Otherwise, we're gonna move ahead with it and we'll tweak it.
I can on Thursday.
You can?
I can.
You can?
I got a cool audience picnic. Six.
Can Nick and I have a copy of it?
Yeah.
Do you want a hard copy? I can give you one tonight before you leave. Just give me a few minutes to make a copy.
That'll work.
I'd take one too.
I just wanted to get Roger comments.
What's that?
It's hard to comment.
Well, I can't get you guys together. So when are we gonna meet?
No, not. Well, yeah, I'm busy every day.
During the day.
During the day, but no, I I have plans for tonight. I'm leaving at four.
Got it. You're busy Wednesday?
Busy Wednesday.
You're busy Wednesday.
I'm busy Wednesday.
Jesus.
Thursday might work.
Okay, look at it on your emails.
I'm gonna give him a hard copy.
Or your hard copies. Make some changes if you want and give them to me. Okay, I'll I'll come in the office sometime.
Didn't have any question. I meant to ask during that, now that we're talking about it. Do we need to? Does council need to? Say that somebody's gonna be an interim or is that kind of just? Somebody's now interim.
Last time. We literally appointed Nick the interim, Nick Schuman. Um.
Didn't know since we accepted his tonight.
I talked to him about it. I can't remember what he said exactly. Leslie and Heidi's, Leslie seems to think she can. Handle handle it.
The agenda.
The agenda. Oh, really? Is that you?
That's why I wanted to ask.
I guess I'm coming in the office a little bit more. Which reminds me, tomorrow at eleven, staff meeting. We do a staff meeting tomorrow at eleven, everybody?
Sounds good.
Or one hour or less. We may try to do that on a different day from now on. But we'll talk about it tomorrow. I don't have anything else. Motion to adjourn. Jerry, all those in favor, say aye.